East Dundee's regular board meeting of dated May 6th, Monday, May 6th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Frankl, take your role, please.
Trusty Treiber.
Here.
Trusty Kuntzey.
Present.
Trusty Mahoney.
Here.
Trusty Britton.
Here.
Trusty Sauter.
Here.
Trusty Saviano.
Here.
And President Linum.
Here. If you'll rise and make the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. That's going to take us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on the agenda or non-agenda item?
I have two. The first one is Brittany Hudson.
Brittany Hudson, okey doke. If you could just state your name and address.
Okay, Brittany Hudson, 449 Roseland Road. I have lived in East Dundee for 26 years. I'm here tonight to address some issues that I have and would like to bring to the attention of the village. First, I'd like to address the situation with the sign at Tequila Val's. I was shocked to see what the village approved as far as the facade goes for what was once the Anvil Club. The Anvil Club was a historic building, and it was ruined for the first time around when the village allowed Mr. Roser to change the historic facade. The village allowed for the most recognizable building and probably the most historic building in the city to become a generic facade of a building. This is supposed to be historic East Dundee. Clearly, there are two sets of rules. I know firsthand because I went from the board, I went before the board to fight for getting our black awning with white letters put on our building next door. I only chose that design because every other business, eight to be exact, has the same type of awning. I was willing to conform to what was already there, and I knew the same type, or and I knew it would look nice and cute and on the little cute house we went, we rent and transformed into a very presentable business. My point is, I conformed to what was already there. My fear is now that you've created a monster unless you change your rules and regulations for facades and/or signage in this town. You not only allowed for a sign that looks nothing like the rest of those in town, but it is not at all historic in its looks. And the tile on the front is hideous, not to mention the color scheme. I don't know the last time I saw tile on the outside of a building built in the 19th century. I'm very afraid for the future of this small town. Your permission granted to this new establishment could become a big problem if not corrected. This new look in our historic town is not only unsightly, it is extremely disappointing. This underscores the importance and need, as many municipalities have already recognized, to have the planning and zoning position be a paid-for position by village and filled by someone who is formally educated and has expertise and experience in the field. This person should go through the proper vetting and a formal hiring process, rather than having a crony of the mayor and/or certain board members appointed to the position. And if you are wondering how you can fund such a position, you can use the recent windfall revenue from slot machines, as it is my understanding and yet another example of East Dundee selling its soul, that the village has the highest number of slot machines per capita in the entire Fox Valley. I'd also like to talk about the $6.5 million parking structure. In my opinion, you are going to spend $6.5 million of taxpayers' money and probably need more to build a two-story building in the wrong place. Keep in mind, the parking structure will be used about half the year at best. I believe the Dodderline location will be a much better choice. Also, let's keep in mind that the Dodderline property will be an expensive property to develop, as much of it sits in a flood zone. In my opinion, that property, albeit a flood zone, is the perfect place for a parking lot. I think moving the parking to the area is more central and keeps River Street open for development. The village can also keep the key part of the Dodderline property open for development, lots that don't flood, while at the same time costing the taxpayers less money in the end. And while I'm at it, I like to point out that the parking lot structure can be built so it does not look like an eyesore. Circling back to the two sets of rules. It seems Roser gets everything he wants while at the same time sticking his thumb in your eye, not letting the village use his parking lot. At the same time, it also seems the village president gets his way by appointing people positions. Again, two sets of rules. I think the village of East Dundee has some things to sort out because things are out of hand. Or should I say it seems things are in the wrong hands? I feel if things are run like this in our small town, it will be running to the ground in no time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, Dan Hart.
This is for an item on the agenda. Isn't that appropriate time to speak?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. My name is Dan Hart from D.C. Cobb's East Dundee. You guys are set to vote on food truck ordinance tonight. So I just wanted to, from my perspective, give my opinion. I appreciate all you guys. As a former city council member in Woodstock, I know how thankless the job is and how stressful it is. So, thank you. I'm not in favor of opening up East Dundee to food trucks. The cost currently for us to build restaurants is between $150 and $200 a square foot. When we built D.C. Cobb's East Dundee, which was a remodel that already included an existing hood, we spent approximately $750,000 to open that location. My weekly labor cost for kitchen in that location is about $7,500, not including my manager's salaries. In order for us to get to where we need to be, we need to make sure that our food sales are at least 4X that to have appropriate percentages. The food side of things for us in East Dundee has been a bit of a struggle. Our late night is what allows us to stay open and continue to do things. We're working really hard right now with mailers, advertisers, advertisements, targeted Facebook ads to other areas to try to bring people in and do things. I'm very fearful that both from a parking scenario of where the proposed areas are would have an adverse effect on us. I'm also very scared that it's going to take sales away from myself and other restaurants in the area that have also made significant investments. Everybody who does choose to spend money with a food truck, that's a sale we're not going to get. We have a very large restaurant with large patio spaces. While we are busy on Friday and Saturday nights, we're not going on long waits. We're able to accommodate those people. When people are on waits, they go to places like Black and Gray Brewery and have a beer. We serve Black and Gray's patio, and their customers are allowed to order to-go food, pick it up from us. I'm sure other locations that are here also offer that. We stopped by to talk to Black and Gray today about their opinion on it. They seemed pretty neutral. They said five years ago, they really wanted to have trucks. That was before we had come in. They felt that food was going to be a big component for them if people were allowed to eat. They said even in their experience of having vendors come to their patio and prepare food, a lot of them have chosen not to come back because they weren't able to generate enough sales because there are so many restaurants and dining options in downtown East Dundee. So they were concerned on that. I had a couple other notes. I apologize for looking at my phone. So given the price that it costs us restaurateurs to build out these places, the cost to build a food truck is somewhere between $25,000 and $100,000 on the higher end. So as a result, and usually their owner operated, we're not able to compete on price with people. We have $7,500 a week in labor. We have loans for our build-outs and all these other things. So if the village does this, you're opening up people from outside town to come in with no investment into your community and just come in and undercut our prices. So somebody's going to be able to come in and serve, you know, burgers or whatever else and sell them for significantly less than we are able to sell them for, to even break even. So that's going to put us at a distinct disadvantage when trying to compete with these people. And they're only coming in at the busy times, on the Mondays, Tuesdays, the days when we don't have anybody. I stopped at my restaurant before I came here. We have two tables sitting there right now. I still have to pay people to be there. I have to have cooks. I have to have managers. I have to have bartenders. I have to have servers. All those things have to exist there. And I understand it's my choice to do that business, and I'm happy to work with the community and other restaurants. But bringing in food trucks and allowing them to come in at our peak times and take sales away from us, that's really just not something that I think is positive for the community. I understand the average person just thinking, hey, we're going to have more food options. That sounds like a good idea. That's what your survey reflected. And I understand why people who've not invested the money and don't understand or know the money we've invested into the community might think that way. But I think you're looking at taking sales and profit directly from people who've invested a lot of money into the community. We partner with Black and Gray. They brew beer for all my locations. We do eight different beers from them, all on draft. We're a huge customer. They're their main customer. I'm not implying that bringing food trucks in is going to close all of my restaurants, but it can have a significant impact on my East Dundee restaurant, which affects us being able to do partnerships and do things like that. I'm very concerned about parking already. When you read through our reviews, people never say that there's no parking in East Dundee, but they will say there's not parking close enough to us. They have to walk. The average consumer doesn't want to walk. That's our biggest problem at our Woodstock location is we're also on a square there. People are unwilling to walk three or four blocks sometimes. They'd rather just cruise off and go somewhere else up the road to, you know, my friend Nico's who's got parking for dates out there. So I hope you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. All right. Nobody else would like to adjust the board? Certainly. Just give us your name and address.
Yes, Tom, Vissel South 211 East Second Street. Been living here for 27 years and learned about the signs going up for the parking restriction for this past winter, just a couple days, I guess, before the sign went in. And it was a total shock to us that these signs would go in in our residence. Second Street is a very wide street. Somebody said that these signs were only going in on narrow streets. I don't understand why a sign would be going in on a very wide street. Lived here 27 years, have never seen an issue with cars being parked even during snow, whether, you know, and then, you know, to have the restriction from December 1st all the way through the end of March seems excessive to me. The signs are an eyesore for, those signs are like every two houses. And kind of talking about, you know, our nice historic look of our village. And to see these signs every two houses, you know, I don't know how many streets in the village have these signs. I know there's a number in our neighborhood, but I think it really takes away from the nice historic look of our village to have all these signs that don't seem to be accomplishing a purpose. So my family's been upset to see the signs, and we would like you to vote no as far as extending this pilot program into next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Carl, please.
Carl Isaac, Diamond Gyms. And I'm not an operator anymore, but I know the margins are very slim. I have the same concerns as D.C. Cobb's. And, you know, I know the, you know, the parking is an issue. If they take up spots for customers that go in any of the other establishments would take up. I mean, how many spots would they take up, you know? And I know a break-even point is rather high for brick-and-mortar establishments. So even a small amount of business taken away would affect their bottom line and, you know, ability to stay in business, I believe. Because I had ran it from the thread from, you know, 2009 to about 2017. So you've got to throw all this money in, you know, in business before it can pay yourself. So it's pretty much the same concerns as.
As Dan.
Yeah. That's, that's.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Carl.
Hi, Joe Conno, I'm the owner and proprietor of Diamond Gyms. I rent from Carl. I am on the same page as Dan Hart, as well as many of the other residents, restaurants in the square area. When we have, when you guys do depot events and things like that, they do benefit us. When you guys have the wine walks and things like that, that definitely does benefit the restaurants in the area. We thank you for bringing people to the area. Again, not to reiterate and beat a dead horse, bringing in food trucks is something that's just going to be so detrimental to us. Every sale we are clinging on for every day. Monday through Friday, like Dan said, Monday through Thursday, you know, our slow time to pick up on the weekends, especially now coming into the summer season, is going to be big. It is my understanding that food trucks are going to be in parking spots. They are going to be, or am I correct? So they are going to be trucks in parking spots that we value, believe are, for lack of a better word, fighting for with D.C. Cobb's, Anvil Club now, Tequila Val's, even Aliano's across the street. Just to keep it short, I'm strongly opposed to having food trucks in downtown East Dundee as far as being a detriment to the existing businesses and neighbors here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Comment from Tequila Val's, new to the town, so I appreciate it. I agree with both the three gentlemen prior. I think that it's something that needs to be drastically looked at. I don't think it's worth it to move forward with it right now. I think we can sample, we can look at other options potentially. I think bringing in food trucks that are not competing or potentially picking a different space. I know that you guys have brought up the AT&amp;T parking lot prior, but bringing, I guess, so-called people that are coming to these food trucks, because I agree there's people that are specifically coming to food trucks and bringing to the town, maybe bringing them to a different location so they pass through the city would give us another option. But I agree with both sides of it. It's extremely expensive. And running a food truck before and owning a food truck before, there's very lax rules, especially in the food health side of it in regards to, they get checked once a year. You know, as a restaurant that's brick-and-mortar, we're getting checked multiple times a year. If someone calls, the delta comes right out. So I agree with all the comments they said. That's the only notes that I wanted to add. But I think that it would be extremely detrimental, especially, for example, if a taco truck pulled up. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Hey. Oh, AJ.
Yes, you're chief of Aliano's. Obviously, it's always a pleasure to see all of you. You know, I'm going to reiterate what everybody has said here at Diamond Gyms, Dan and Colin. My biggest thing is what folks, I won't repeat what Dan said because he did cover the financials and labor. But what I will tell you is Q1 as an industry was devastating. So there's a lot of money we put back into the businesses that people don't necessarily see. The summertime days is where we make that money back. And additional competition is not fruitful for us. And that's something I want you guys to consider. I recognize that it adds to vibrancy of the community. I don't knock that. I understand that. But this is our time to make back the investments we make when nobody sees what we have to do from October to February to stay open. And those costs are substantial. And, you know, year over year, you know, 29% was the loss rate in the industry just as an overall from last year. And not to mention the input costs have gone up 33%. So, you know, I used to buy detergent. It was $17.43 last year. It's $43 now. We have to cover those costs. So, you know, I think there's always a middle ground, and I'm not saying that there isn't. But what I am telling you is that as businesses here, we recognize that we have to a lot to put in. And the summer seasons, whether it's Wind Down Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, which are great events and other events we want to do as a community, that's where we make our bread and butter to stay open year-round. That's really the input that I want to put in. The last point I want to make because I think everybody did a great job covering everything else. I do continue to mention parking. It is something that, you know, as a facility, we have older folks who come in, and parking is a big, big problem for us. So all those spots we lose is additional spots. But thank you so much, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to just? Okay, seeing none. That will take us to our consent agenda. We're going to request that item D be polled and voted on separately because of the requirements for the vote.
And Mayor, you can vote on that also because more than a majority is required.
Oh, I see. Okay. So can I have a motion to pull that from the consent agenda?
Item D is in dog.
D is in dog, yes. Do we need to have a motion to pull it?
I think it would be a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D.
All right, we can do that then.
Okay, I'll move to approve, I will say, I will make a motion to approve a regular village board meeting minutes dated April 15th, 2024. Also, a motion to approve executive session minutes dated June 26th, 2023, October 2nd, 2023, November 6th, 2023, November 20th, 2023, January 22nd, 2024, February 5th, 2024, and March 4th, 2024. Motion, motion to accept the warrants list in the amount of $526,344.10. Motion to approve a resolution terminating a boundary agreement between the Village of Hoffman Estates and the Village of East Dundee. A motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 93.99 penalties of the village code to align with recent amendments to Section 93 dot 11 regarding noise. And a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 32 dot 09 of the village code concerning the appointment of members to the Art Council.
Now, a second.
Second, okay. Are there any questions, comments, discussion on any of these points? No? Frankl.
Treiber.
Yes.
Kuntzey.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Yes.
Britton.
Yes.
Sauter.
Yes.
Saviano.
Yes.
Okay, so then if we could have a motion for item D in the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing the village to waive competitive bidding and enter into an agreement with Stewart Spreading Incorporated for the transportation and land application of biosolids.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Second, okay. Are there any questions on this? And this is just the basically waste removal over at the water treatment plant. It's telling Phil, years ago, we used to get paid to do this, now we're paying the other way. So are there any questions or anything? No? Okay.
Well, I guess, why are we saying it's a waiver of bid if we got three proposals?
We didn't issue a formal RFP.
Oh, okay. I see. All right.
So we did receive three proposals. This is the lowest of the three proposals.
We use a standard form to solicit proposals, but we didn't go through a formal competitive bidding process with, where we were open still, because we didn't go through that process. There's only really three vendors that would provide the service for us and so we reached out to three and solicited proposals concurrently.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any else? No? Frank.
Treiber.
Yes.
Kuntzey.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Yes.
Britton.
Yes.
Sauter.
Yes.
Saviano.
Yes.
President Linum.
Yes. Okay, that'll take us to our other agenda items, number six. That'll take us to A, if we could have a motion.
I'll step into this.
We want to step into this.
I'll move to approve an ordinance amending village code section 37.01 and chapters 113 and 120 concerning food trucks.
Hold a second.
Okay, we have questions, discussion, anybody who would like to?
Can I sort of introduce how this all started since it was our little committee that did the whole thing? Please help.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. And Tricia and Kathleen, please help me. So the Events and Depot Committee kind of had food trucks proposed to us a year ago-ish. And so we started out with the survey to see, to kind of gauge interest because frankly, if nobody wanted it, we weren't going to step on this landmine. So we had significant interest based on the survey. So what we did next is we really started tackling the code because our code disagreed with itself, our code disagreed with the application. It was pretty messy. So what we did over the course of a few meetings is we really looked at the code. And while we were trying to mush it all together and kind of fit what the, you know, the needs or desire from the survey, we also wanted to make sure that we were trying our best to support our businesses. So things like limiting the hours that a food truck is able to exist in this town so that it's never allowed over dinner hours. Having specific locations in town that we were trying to kind of get out of the way and not have, like it used to be right on the depot slanted parking, and we moved it out of there to what we were trying to make out-of-the-way parking spots, right? So it's not straight in front of the depot, things like that. So we did go about this. We did try to come up with a little bit of compromise where we could. But to be honest, our main focus was really tackling the code because it was such a mess. So what we're trying to put forward today is some of those compromises that we came up with, expecting feedback from the board, expecting to hear from you guys and hear, you know, how can we, how can we do this in a way that isn't extremely detrimental to our businesses, but also does kind of bring up a little bit of vibrancy, maybe allow other people to come into our town, things like this. So it's really about, what we tried to do was strike a balance. I think we can do more today. But that's really kind of where we're starting from at this point, is fairly cleaned up code so that we don't have to read 20 pages of stuff that contradicts itself. And just our first go at figuring a path forward. So that's where we're, we're starting from.
Yeah, and there was never any intent to take away anything from our brick-and-mortar businesses. What I've known from research, and it could be the research I found, there could be others out there. There's no statistically significant data that shows that it harms brick-and-mortars because when people are searching for food trucks, a lot of times they're searching for a specific food truck. Food trucks have followings. I would never want to see a taco truck outside of Tequila Val's or a burger truck outside of D.C. Cobb's or any of things like that. Like I don't think that's helpful for our businesses. What we were trying to look at was a compromise of something to bring in, something extra for those that would come to town that maybe wouldn't generally, that would follow a food truck, but not to take away from our brick-and-mortar, who of course are, you know, you are a priority for us. So I, we were trying to talk about it and brainstorm, and I didn't find any data. I wouldn't have an Italian truck outside of your place either, for the record. But that's where we were trying to come up with, like what kind of compromise can bring people to town because there are followers, followers of food trucks that don't generally come into certain areas unless they're there. So that, that's where our heads were at, never to be a detriment to our brick-and-mortars.
You know, additionally, the food trucks are not allowed to serve liquor of any sort. And we would see this as an opportunity for some of the existing brick-and-mortar establishments to welcome and, and to welcome some of these patrons that are new to the town to experience your particular restaurants or bars and your venues as well. So we were, with the survey, there were over, help me out, Caleb, 280 respondents? Or 365, 265 respondents, yeah. And this was put out through the email newsletter and on Facebook?
It is. I'm, I would have to double-check. I'm not sure it was, but it was put out until she made that.
Okay. So, so there was definitely an overwhelming desire to see, to have a splash of newness and to bring into the village. And there was one other point I wanted to make, and I can't remember what it was. Anyway, if I come back up with it through the conversation and discussion. So beyond just the downtown area, we focused on that because we knew this was going to be, and is trying to establish places. And we worked with the fire, our fire inspector, Mark Quattrucci, to make sure that, you know, these places would be safe. There's, there's also the option of having them be in different parking lots, say out by the Dominics, by, across from, or in Santa's Village or in these other areas that would benefit to have people come into the village. It's not going to benefit the people from downtown as directly because they wouldn't be coming into the downtown area, but they would benefit from that. And then the other, the last thing that I think we want to take a look at is, is, you know, what kind of benefit would the village? know, what kind of benefit would the village get from having a food truck, besides having more people come into the village that might not normally know us? But having the, the taxes and having them move their place of venue, so that the food taxes that would, and, that would normally be going to where they are storing their, or where their establishment is based, they would come to East Dundee. So, that's just a few of the things that have come up over the day. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
Yeah. I mentioned you wouldn't want to see a burger truck in front of DC Cops Taco. How do we regulate that? Because there's nothing in the ordinance that says anything to that.
Well, that's, I think, some of the stuff that we're discussing right now. This isn't like a let's vote on it, it's moving forward, it's like, let's get feedback, and we're going to talk about it.
Yeah, sorry, we took three meetings just to figure out the code, so we definitely didn't cover everything.
The code, the code. Yeah.
I would say if we are going to move forward with this, a couple of things, I would, we did, we did this already, twenty-nineteen, we did it as a one-year pilot program. I think that if we did this again, we should do it as a one-year sunset, that we can talk about it again in a year, and look at the actual data that comes in from our restaurant owners, as far as what this impact had on the village. You know, it's interesting that all of our restaurant owners came and talked about how they don't like the food trucks, and I probably understand that, but everybody mentioned the parking. I have yet to find one resident that wants to build a parking garage in this town, not one. But we're still trying to make it happen, because you guys want parking. So, you know, it's kind of a give-and-take thing, that's all I can say about that.
I have a question about the sunset. So we have, I think, I definitely want to look at it again in a year, but a sunset automatically expires, and that's sort of what we ran into with the, when we were looking at the code. We had this sunsetted code that was still being referenced in other areas of the code, and it was just a little bit messy. So can we build something in where we look at it, but it doesn't automatically sunset? Where it's like a forced review? Is that, is there such a thing as that, or do we have to sunset it?
We can do a review.
Okay. Like where we force a review after a year, or, so, like, I mean, pretty much at the end of the season, it doesn't have to be a full year, it can be...
I mean, your home rule, you can do pretty much what you want to do.
Don't tell us that! Yeah, that's...
I think you just want to be careful with the licensing issue, and making sure that it would be clear in the code that these are temporary licenses.
Any license is only good for a year anyway. It's only good until December. So, I mean, we could say that in January, we'd have to look at the data.
Or in December.
Or in December? When the licenses are up, when this year's licenses are up? Does that work, Scott?
Well, I guess I would say that I would want us to have another discussion like this in a year.
Yeah.
Regardless of people's licenses, but, you know, specifically about...
Yeah, we just, we can't have it before the end of, like...
We could, we can't have it what?
Like bef, I mean, I guess we could have it before, we could have it at any point. We can have it in two months if you want.
Right. Yeah. I guess I would say, I'd like to see the mechanism that we put in place to limit the types of trucks that could come in, in the ordinance before we vote on it.
Okay.
So I guess I would say, I would move to table this, or, do I want to table it, or do I want to postpone?
Postpone, postpone.
Yeah. But let's, but, but let's make sure we have the conversation before we go to postpone, if that's...
That's fine.
Okay.
I would have liked to seen the conversation take place before a motion came on the agenda. We're talking about this issue as if we need this. We're talking about trying to fit this in and, and come to an amenable compromise as if this is a necessary thing, and I don't see it as a necessary thing. To Dan's point, every, every item purchased from a food truck is an item lost to one of our brick-and-mortar stores, and we frankly rely on our brick-and-mortar operations for our sustenance. These food trucks are a cool vibe, I get it. We talk about the effectiveness of this survey that went out. I don't, I don't know anything about this survey, and quite frankly, if you're going to ask people if you'd like to see food trucks in downtown East Dundee, and I'm thinking, hey, I don't live in East Dundee, but I like to ride my bike through there, and lots of different options, hey, that's a real cool thing. What I think would have been a more meaningful approach to this, and just for the future, Franco and, and Caleb, that you might want to offer the entire picture. Show them, tell people, hey, this is the cost involved, this is the downside to it, because it's important. Because if we're going to put out on Facebook a question that asks people something, chances are, the majority of these people that are going to respond don't live in East Dundee, so they're not going to take the hit when this all goes bad, and eventually it will. I really, I really would caution us, using the strength of people, of outside people's opinions on whether or not we should do this, and I say, I don't even know why we feel as though we have to. If I'm a restaurateur, and I'm putting six or seven or eight-hundred-thousand dollars into a brick-and-mortar operation, I think this is a thumb in the eye to that effort. And when these brick, and when these operations come in, and, as we say, compete directly with these, these, when the food trucks come in and, and we're forced then to compete with this kind of temporary and transient model, it's just going to make more difficulty, one, keeping our brick-and-mortar operations up and running, but two, attracting any further ones, because if we're going to go out there and say, hey, East Dundee's open for business, the majority of people who are going to see the way we support our businesses, they're likely to say, well, good for you and good luck, I'm going to look for another town, this is not something I don't want to invest my money in, and I can't see anybody who would blame them. So, the idea of, if we had, if it was a larger town, and we had a, a part of our community that would accommodate this sort of thing, a food truck court layout sort of thing, I would say, okay. But the idea of putting it in the downtown, I think, is going to be a recipe for the demise of that downtown, and we work too hard. There are a number of people in this room and on this, excuse me, on this board, who were around fifteen, sixteen short years ago, when it was nothing more than a ghost town. We were lucky to get a dozen people in this downtown at any given weekend, at any time of the day. Now it's a vibrant, really happening little community, and I get nothing but comments, and, and I wanted to bring one, as a matter of fact, thanking everybody for their efforts, from one resident, pointing out the effort that has gone into bringing about what we have, and how much they appreciate it, and thinking, wow, that's really cool, because we don't get a lot of thank yous at this job. But, once, once we allow this, and we're talking about, hey, we're going to make all kinds of accommodations, and sunsets, and this and that, that's nothing more than a camel's nose under the tent. If you let this in, future boards are going to be able to amend what's out there, and now it will be, or other types of trucks that will be allowed, other hours, other days, we say, hey, we've talked about the idea of limiting this to four times per year, fine. Eventually it's going to be six, then it's going to go to monthly, then it's going to go to weekly, and as a matter of fact, your letter reads, allowing this on a weekly basis. I've had a number of calls today, and when I say a number, I mean a lot, every one of whom have asked, weekly? Jesus, you're going to put this out of business? And I don't know how to respond to that, because there was no indication that it was going to be limited beyond that. So, the way it reads, and I can understand their apprehension, was, hey, what are you doing to us? I don't know how to respond. And these are the businesses that are supporting you, water, sewer, the streets, the police, the fire, everything here, we live and die on the sales tax. And if we're going to go ahead and make more difficult, the, the efforts that our brick-and-mortar operations have in generating those sales taxes, we're all going to pay for it in the end. And in the beginning, it's going to look really cool, and everything is good, excuse me, it's going to be cool, it's going to look great, lots of activity, and the vibe is going to be high. That's going to fade, and once it does, we're all going to pay the price, because we're going to be backslight, backslight to a ghost town here in East Dundee. I'm going to have a very difficult time attracting, Terry, you'd probably be able to add to this, it's going to be an impossible task, an impossible task, to try and attract new businesses into the downtown.
Okay, stop, stop, stop.
I, I, I just point out, Terry, because this is his area.
So, just, just so we're clear, regardless of what we do tonight, a future board can institute a policy of any sort that they want, nothing we do tonight is going to affect a future board.
No, that's true.
Okay.
But we don't have to add to it, and we don't have to leave the foundation for it and be part of it. You know, we can't control what future boards do.
Right.
We can't control what we do, and we can control the message that we send to not only our existing businesses, but ones who might want to relocate here.
But number one, your ability to predict the future is really impressive tonight, that I'm hearing, number one. Number two, you saying you know nothing about the survey is actually really concerning to me, because we discussed it in multiple board meetings.
No, 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 I'm not saying I didn't know about this.
No, no, you did say that, and we can rewind the tape, you said that, that is very concerning. So I'm not sure what bravado you're trying to do at this moment, but it's disturbing to me.
What the survey doesn't include is the cost involved, it says, do you want this? And you think about it, and you say, yay.
Actually, Jeff, if you read the, the charts that were provided from the survey, question number four, does ask the question, would it benefit the local economy? Do they feel it? Number one.
No, that's not a proper question, you're going to have to ask, do you want this, in fact, i- i- if it, at the risk of it costing us, our local economy?
Jeff, please, please, can everybody please calm down? You're, you're very heightened, please calm down.
I'm just asking the board to consider what I'm saying.
I would like to, I would like to make a suggestion here. So, I understand that this is a topic that's near and dear to everybody's heart, people in the board, people in the audience, the community, and this is not something that people have taken lightly. They, the committee discussed this for several months, nobody's trying to do anything to harm this village. Everybody here is invested personally, professionally, passionately about this community and how to be part of its success. So I think that there's a disconnect between what's trying to be achieved and what actually may happen. And the best course of action for us to take at this point is to figure out what's a reasonable compromise to get where we want to be. And three out of the six trustees worked on this for several months, so that is half of the voting members present this evening, so that, to me, that makes a statement, that there is some interest in moving this forward, or we wouldn't have spent time on it. Before I move on, I have one other point to make. If there's issues with the survey, please don't call it members of the staff, the criticism can be directed at me, I'm the village administrator. I think that the staff has done what has been asked of them, and I think that they've done it really well. So, going forward, it, the difference between what we're trying to achieve, what, my understanding of what we're trying to achieve, and, and the fears that are there about what may happen, you know, maybe we do this a handful of times a year versus the concern and the fear that this is going to happen every weekend all summer long. I think that a cap is a great idea, four, six, something there, like, we're not talking about every weekend, maybe we're talking about once a month for four months. I think that if people had certainty around what was coming, they would have more ability to be supportive. So, whatever you guys think makes sense as far as amending this with a cap, I think that would go a long ways to alleviating some of those concerns. Additionally, Scott, your concern about the menus, my suggestion would be to amend this ordinance to say that if a food truck wants to get a permit for a particular location, they have to have a menu substantially differentiated from whatever brick or mortar is within a certain radius, and that menu would have to be submitted at the time of the application. So, whatever evening they're going to be present, you know, they can't serve the same food. If, if the business was closed that night, then they could, but if the business was open, they would have to have a substantially different menu than whatever was open within a reasonable distance of, of this. So, those are my two suggestions for how to amend this.
Additionally, to, you know, the cap, you know, we've got, in the downtown area, we've got three different locations, that could be also limited to one location, but you can choose which location you want to be at, depending upon what your menu is like, so that you can achieve that, you know, that minimum radius, you know, is it, is it max one truck in town at a time?
Right.
Can I ask them, if, if what we're talking about is wanting food trucks in general, and to bring into town people who follow these two food trucks, and try and build on a vibe, so to speak, that they create, why does it have to be in the downtown? Why, if we want to, if we, if we're looking to compromise this by having the number of times the community happen in the year, that's fine, why not also then limit where it can happen? There's no, I don't think, and maybe I'm overlooking this, and so someone has to show me, but I don't see what the benefit is to the village in having these food trucks in the downtown, specifically north of Seventy-two, south of Barrington. Why does it have to happen there? I mean, we're talking about a direct conflict with what the village is here already established to do. If we want to try and bring in food trucks and accommodate these wonderful crowds that they tend to generate, let's move it over to Twenty-five, let's go over by Seven, uh, by Santa's Village, where there is an automatic built-in group of, of customers for them, if that's what they're looking, excuse me, looking to do, I don't see any benefit, and I heard, I've heard no benefit of it being located in the north part of our downtown.
I think there's two, two different audiences for these three spots. There's one set of restaurants, brick-and-mortar restaurants in our town, who have requested this, because they would like to serve food, they don't have food, it's a very limited capacity, it's not the same advantage of a full restaurant. But, sorry. Yeah, there's two bars that do want to serve food, and they've requested this, that's what two of the spots are for. And the other spot that's along the bike trail, targets trail users, to look at those two separately.
Where's that one?
The one by Duke's, the caboose that is the, by the lumberyard. So that one, I see that as being very different people who are going to be pulled into that. We have probably a thousand trail users going by, just streaming past our town, not stopping, because they're, a couple will stop and go into a restaurant, but mostly, I bike every weekend, you're sweaty, and you're wearing cleats, that people don't want you walking on their wood floors, and you're not going to go sit in at a restaurant, so you'll just go past. But I have stopped, when there is, like, downtown Elgin, they'll have a food truck, and I wasn't planning on stopping, but I'll see one, grab a waffle sandwich, and then throw away the garbage and keep riding. So I think that you'll pull in people who aren't going to restaurants on the trail, and the people at Black and Gray and the Distance Social are the ones asking for the other, and it, it is a very limited amount of times they can do it, and if we limit what they can compete, as far as the types of foods, I don't know that it's our role to limit competition, say, you're not allowed to cater and use this spot on this one time a week, or one time a month, and they, because we don't, they brew beer, Black and Gray, we could require the same thing of the restaurants, and say, you're only allowed to serve Black and Gray beer, they're local, you're local, you should only serve each other's beers.
So, so...
Right, it'd be wrong, I agree.
So we, so we do need to...
And this seems similar, where I don't want to limit what a, a bar is allowed to serve.
So, so there is a little bit to that. What we're talking about is on public property, Black and Gray and TDS can both bring in pop-ups, and they can bring in whatever pop-up they want, we're not regulating that. So we're not regulating what the restaurants are serving as far as beer and alcohol, and we're not regulating what those, what the brewery and the, and TDS are bringing in as far as food. This is public. This is public property, so we can regulate the compete, and I think places like Crystal Lake have done that. There is a distance clause, as far as how far away a competing business is from any food truck that comes in for it. So there is a little bit of, we can, we can regulate this, and I get that it's, you know, fair market competition and all that good stuff, but I also understand the difference between bringing in a food truck for that purpose and the amount of money that's spent on a brick-and-mortar. So, I, the other thing that I, I do just want to say, is in the packet, it's in the envelope.
So I, the other thing that I, I do just wanna say is in the packet, it's in the application. I, maybe it wasn't put in the code because like I've said a few times, the amount of times we had to look at the code was making me crazy. There's already a limit on the number of times any given truck can come into town for a season. I think reducing that, I think we'd originally said like 10 to 15, 15's in here. Let's look at maybe pulling that down and let's, you know, definitely we can make that like, limit the number of times any individual food truck is allowed to be in. And I love Erica's suggestion of limiting the amount of weekends we have a food truck or something like that. I think it will be interesting and I'm also, you know, we kinda kicked around the Friday to Monday to 11, 10 or 11 to 6, 10 to 6-ish, um, for a lot of the cyclists and a lot of the people who are floating through downtown. If that's not great, we, our main effort was to avoid dinner, right? It was to avoid the influx of the dinner crowd and get people out when we're drawing the most people into town. If that's something that we need to look at, honestly, I want lunch places. I would love weekday lunch places more than anything, but I don't know how that all balances out. So, you know, I think that there's still a lot that we can look at to give this a shot. And honestly, if nobody comes or if nobody wants it, if nothing really happens, then we nix it, you know? But if it does draw people in from the bike path, make people stop off the bike path, things like that, then, I don't know. Maybe it's, it's worth investigating for a year and seeing what it does.
I have a feeling that we will have a hard time competing to get these food trucks to come out when we aren't giving them weekend dinner hours. So probably we're not gonna see that much of it. I think for something to explore in the future is creating a bank of them over by Hager on the bike trail that is enough that it would be a stop for trail users and be kind of a destination and further, far enough away from the bars and restaurants that it's not competing. Uh, and I do think it's a different group of people. It's more, uh, the trail users on a nice day when there's, uh, more of an event than just one truck. If there's like a bank of food trucks and it happens once a month or once a quarter on the trail way down there, that might be a better use.
So if there has to be an amendment to the motion, I would say that's the perfect one.
Well, we don't have that property yet.
I'm not suggesting that, uh, that it's a bad thing necessarily. What I am objecting to is where we're gonna decide to put these things. And we're talking about it as if it's a really cool thing that really needs to be done. I'm not convinced of that either.
You're talking about it.
You know, what I think I would have just for the future-
I mean, the location that we have right now is on Fourth Street. It's an alley. I mean-
Are we permitted to still address the board during the discussion or not?
Well, if you have something new to add, yeah, you can.
Andy, so in all of your examples, you said that you don't go into restaurants when you're on bikes, that, when you go through, which-
Rarely.
So we've invested in multiple bike racks in front of our establishment and they're always full. So I don't know if it's the shoes or cleats or whatever, we do get a lot of people. But in your example that you use when you're riding through Elgin and you see a food truck and stop, you consume your food, throw away the wrapper and then go on your way. I'm unclear how that benefits the community of Elgin. And what you just said about having a bank of food trucks outside that would cater to people riding through, I'm also unclear how that would benefit East Dundee because then you have people stopping, eating and leaving. They're not coming to local establishments, they're not coming to restaurants, they're not coming to get beer from Black and Gray or anywhere else. And as I said earlier, we did talk to Black and Gray and they seemed very indifferent about this. They don't seem to be pushing it. I've not talked to anyone from the Distance Social, but the bike path for us is a, a big source of revenue and business in the summer of people driving by. If they can stop earlier and get food much more cost effectively, I mean, who wouldn't do that? If you can stop and get a burger or something else for seven or eight dollars instead of going into the town and paying more money, I think that'd be a no-brainer. I agree with you, I would stop and get something that was much more cost-effective for me and my family than going into town and going into an establishment and paying more and then being expected to tip in gratuity and do those things. But that's to the death of rent of businesses. We're all here and already invested. But what happens, how are you gonna attract new businesses if they know that you're doing this, which I see as working against brick and mortar businesses? And if someone is to close, they don't have the sales and do that. How are you gonna attract someone to come in when you're saying as a village, we're willing to park trucks, you know, in your downtown and undercut you guys? I just, I don't think it's a good look. Any town we go into, we do research their food truck laws always, some of them do do them. But to your idea about events, I think having specialized events, that's a great idea. Woodstock on the square, on the square does a food truck event and it's packed and all the restaurants are packed 'cause it's once a summer, they attract a bunch of trucks and a thousand people show up. Well, they don't have food in those trucks for a thousand people. So then at DC Cobbs in downtown Woodstock, we're jam-packed, the trucks are jammed, everybody's good. So I think events that some of you guys are talking about, I think that's a great idea. But to have it be consistent, I, I just don't think that's a good idea.
I think it would've been better probably to have this as a discussion and not a motion so that we could get all this feedback. And so at least we can take it in 'cause I'm, I appreciate all the feedback.
But I think, I think it's, I think it's worth continuing the discussion and trying to come up with some path forward, right? I don't wanna just say, "We've had a discussion, now we're done."
Right, right. I think it's a matter of like, how do we dip our toe in water and not upset the apple cart? Um, and to see, you know, if there's even interest from other people, um, other food trucks or other people. And, and also what do we need to rinse and repeat and what do we need to change?
Maybe we'll look at a weekend, one weekend a month? Or I'm still kind of thinking like, I mean, there's always Motor Mondays, which is part of-
And that's it, and that's, and that was one of the, besides Black and Gray and, and Distance Social, Motor Mondays was something that is, is definitely, and by the way, on the survey that I particularly loved, um, Motor Mondays was the one that was least attended to by the people that attended in the sur, the survey. And I have a feeling that's probably partially because there aren't, it isn't a destination and an event. It's specific to, um, carve, you know, buffs-
And a lot of places are closed on a Monday too.
Yeah, and, and all the places are closed. And so, you know, we worked with Duke to try and stay open and I think, um, DC Cobbs is open as well on Mondays. So that's great, but how can we, you know, attract more people? Or, and/or would you guys be interested in putting up a tent on Motor Mondays like you would for Wind Down Wednesday or Thursday Thursdays in lieu of that? Um, so that we can help promote that. Um, I, that's just another option.
How do we push forward?
Oh.
Postpone.
I don't like-
Well, we need to postpone, but I, I wanna, I don't just wanna kick the can, right?
Do you wanna have another, you know, like Committee of the Whole meeting? Do you want it to go back to the, the committee?
Here's my thought. We, we're getting it from both sides. We get people that want them and we of course have people that don't want them. I would love to hear like what could a middle ground look like to this holder? What could, you know, like you had suggested the, the one-time-a-year fest. Like I would love to hear other ideas like that where it can be a win-win because we are getting it from people that would love it too. So I wanna find the bridge, whereas that's what I want.
Yeah.
We want a then committee, we need a committee.
Can I just say something coming from a resident, stand right next to me here listening to all this? There's nowhere to eat here on Monday, there's like two places open. So Motor Mondays would be great, whether or not they bring out their own, you know, establishments that are here or something else. But I'm always looking for a place to eat on Monday that isn't the same place.
Diamond gyms were open on Mondays, we're right there.
Yes, but, but that's two places.
I think we're all the same. Everyone's talking about food trucks, we're right there, we're right off the bike trail. We have a patio right in front for those bikers. You put it down, Hager's Bend, they stop there, they pull right through. It just doesn't make sense, guys. I don't see what's benefiting the village. What are you guys getting? Taxes for them? No. You get a hundred dollar fee, come on.
Alright, so one thing I'd like to see is, a couple of people have mentioned other municipalities. I'd love to see what other people are, have as far as rules and all that sort of thing and neighboring. I mean, other co, communities have restaurants, brick and mortar restaurants and they have, uh, food trucks. So somehow they've made it work. Uh, I'd like to see, you know, what, what they are doing.
We, we did a lot of that. Caleb can easily look into-
I don't have that data though, so can you send that to me?
Franco, I know Franco and Caleb worked on it really hard.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna see sales cannibalized anyway. It's, the reason that we feel like there's a way, a path forward somehow with the right system or rules is that, um, I'm just going on my own personal experience of the dozen times I've gone to a food truck. It's either, uh, a destination, like I went to Crystal Lake Brewing, they have a food truck. It sold out in a half hour, so when I got there, I just went to the next door, Duke's Ale House and got food there because, uh, if they're really successful and people buy out everything really quick and they're drawing a, a big crowd that follows that food truck around, then that's gonna spill over to the other restaurants.
They can't park and that food truck's private property. They have their personal brewery. Yeah, that's on, they're private.
In the time that I stopped at the one in Elgin, I stopped and went to their farmer's market and walked around in that area while I'm eating. And if you get people on the trail to stop and then look around, go into one shop, they're more likely to be aware and come back again. So we're trying to find those instances where it benefits the area, makes it more lively. Like you're saying, the event that might be a great starting point is let's do a big enough event that it benefits everybody. But yeah, I think we're just trying to narrow in on what are those ideas.
Is there a possibility for owners of restaurants to be on your committee to help get feedback on what would work as a process?
Well, if we have this at a Committee of the Whole, you'd be certainly welcome to attend and chime in, absolutely.
They're welcome to the events committee meetings too.
Yeah.
Of course, the committee event, the Committee of the Whole would include all of us, so it would be a little more structured, so, absolutely. So we have the notion of postponing this, is there a motion for that? Where we can talk then, between now and then to further amend the ideas?
Then I'd like to get a Committee of the Whole meeting on the calendar.
Okay.
As part of the postponement.
Do that. Carefully to your point earlier, we will be open on Monday.
Alright, great. Yeah, you'd be perfect.
And you got a lot of cars right out in front of you, so, great, that's good to know, thank you.
Yeah.
So one item is motion to postpone.
Yeah.
The Tequila Valley's gonna be open on Mondays.
Okay.
Tequila Valley's gonna be open on Monday. And Jim's is open on Monday.
Okay, so when do we wanna have a Committee of the Whole?
Yes, does anybody object to discussing this further at a next Committee of the Whole meeting?
Which we don't have on the books, so.
Is there a June date for that? For, what's the date?
Today is May 6th.
So our next one is on the 27th?
The 13th, um, not the 27th 'cause that's Memorial Day weekend.
Could, could we do this, uh, I mean, there's no magic to it being on a Monday, is there? I mean, we could do this on a Wednesday, you know, I mean, or like a June-
Mondays or Fridays are better for me.
Mondays or Fridays? Um, how's June 10?
Well, the, um, there was a mention of possibly not having anything for the first meeting in June. Should we just talk about it at the first meeting in June instead of at a Committee of the Whole? Can we have it, can we?
June 3rd?
June 3rd, sounds fine.
Make a discussion item.
I do what I can.
Just do the Committee of the Whole on June 10 instead of a-
Well, we, a board meeting, we can do that. We could just do it as a regular board meeting because we have one scheduled and then just do it as a discussion item, right?
We can do that as well. Okay, June 3rd, postponed to June 3rd.
June 3rd. So I will make a motion to postpone this topic, uh, to June 3rd, the June 3rd meeting.
Second.
Caleb, Caleb, sorry, Franco.
Schreiber?
Yep.
Quincy?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That will then take us to our next item of the discussion.
Guys can all-
Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you.
Well, careful because the next agenda item is important for you too.
Take care of it.
Thank you all. Thanks, Carl, I'll talk to you. Okay, this is a continued discussion on a potential liquor tax, food and beverage tax or an increased Business Development District BDD tax. Erica, would you like to start us off on the, uh, where we stand and where we'd like to be?
So included in the packet tonight is some additional information requested the last time we had this discussion. Uh, there is no recommendation at this time. Happy to answer any questions, but don't really have any kind of presentation for this evening. Yeah, there's a lot of options, a lot of data. Overall, good news on the village's financial position.
How about that debt charge?
Pretty, pretty impressive progress on reducing the village's debt, right?
For my, the only thing I would add here, weigh in on would be to, if we could avoid the, the food and beverage tax simply because, um, that's just gonna be added pressure to our restaurants and they, uh, you know, don't need that. I think what we can accomplish here can be great things if we just focus on a, a liquor tax and it would be packaged goods as well, so it would be-
How would that be different than a food and beverage tax? It's still gonna be-
Well, because it, it wouldn't include packaged goods at either bars or liquor stores, that sort of thing, 'cause it's-
So you only wanna do packaged liquor?
No, 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 I would, I would, I would suggest that we do it at the bars and restaurants, but just on the liquor. And then also, it would also include, uh, a tax on, on packaged goods as well at a liquor store or, you know, a gas station, that sort of thing. Because those are some significant sales as well. And, uh, I guess what I'm saying is that a food and beverage tax is only really gonna isolate or, um, you know, focus on the restaurants and-
Which is who this parking garage is gonna serve.
Well, no, it's gonna serve everybody. There's a, there's a bigger picture that needs to be considered. And, and I get it for in the short term or in a very narrow view, you, you know, the, the idea is that it would only accommodate, um, the, the bars and restaurants. But, uh, more, from a more global perspective, I think that the better that the whole town does, you know, the rising tide lifting all ships kinda thing, everyone's gonna benefit from it.
Except for when it comes to food trucks.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Cause that's a business model that we took.
Okay, 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 we tabled that, let's move on, I cannot, I know, I know.
I apologize to everyone.
I, I guess, I guess I just have a really hard time with the fact that like we're, at this point, the parking garage is gonna support a very specific location. I haven't spoken to a single resident who wants it. And I wanna make sure that the way that we're paying for it is in a way that will, like, we, the people who will benefit are the ones paying for it. That is what I am really trying to focus here. Because the rest, well, yeah, that doesn't make me any happier.
Well, I think Sarah, to that, the way to do that is to instill like the BDD tax, maybe raise that because then the people that are using that garage, coming here to dine, are the ones that are paying for it.
Yeah, but the BDD tax also goes on, um, you know-
Any other thing besides-
Any other thing in the village. Any other thing that's taxed in, in, in the downtown area.
I just, you know, packaged, packaged liquor.
Everything that goes on in the downtown that would be taxed by that would be, would be theoretically parking possibly at that garage or that could be an option at least.
But the BDD tax, you have to understand, is limited to a quarter of a point. That's as much as we would be able to raise it, even with home rule status, we couldn't go any higher than that. Whereas the liquor tax, we could put on 2%, 3%, some towns have 5% or 6%. And so it gives us a little bit more leeway. Now, I'm not suggesting that we go that high, but with the liquor tax, we're not restricted by the rules of either BDD or TIF or anything like that.
Okay, none of the towns on our list have 5% or 6%, they're capped out at 3%. And those are towns like Hoffman Estates, Hanover Park, St. Charles. We are not any of those towns.
No, we're not.
Can you, Jeff, I'm reading the food and beverage tax and it does include liquor.
Oh yeah, definitely, it definitely does.
So I don't understand why you are against that but for the liquor tax.
If we just have it on liquor, where, where it would just be, you know, what's served at bars and restaurants only on the liquor and then packaged goods, it's going to be less of a bite and less of a, less of a, a, um, you know, it'd be- it's going to be less of a bite and less of a, less of a, um, you know, it would be less onerous, if you will, on the bars and restaurants than a food and beverage tax. And food and beverage tax is only going to key in on the restaurants because they're the only ones that are serving.
No, it would. It would also affect the bars because it's a liquor tax as well.
True, I know, but.
But you keep saying it's only on the restaurants.
We don't have any bars, that's the point. Most of our, all our bars serve food except for this is social, you know, so. I'm just saying, it would also, you know.
The tax is also going to impact Willow and Birch, it's going to impact all the hairdressers, yeah, it's going to impact, you know.
Those are service oriented, well, I guess they sell items some, and some, but a BDD tax would affect all of them as well.
Yes.
And again, as I say, a BDD tax is limited to a quarter of a point tick. That's as far as we can go at any one time. It won't generate anywhere near the kind of revenue a one or two percent liquor tax will. So.
So, I'm confused about, you keep saying liquor tax. So, the tax definitions are either food and beverage, restaurant and eating tax, or packaged liquor alcohol sales tax, or a liquor consumption tax, which one place does.
It would, it would be a combination of a packaged liquor tax and a liquor consumption tax.
Okay.
It would be both of those, but.
Thank you.
Circling back to the good news here, the village is paying off substantial debt. We're not actually recommending doing anything. We're saying you have a lot of options on the table here if you want to do something, but we have enough money to build this garage without doing anything. That doesn't mean we won't recommend doing something when it comes time to do the budget, just because we want to have some time to develop that to see, you know, what, if any changes in the econ- economic outlook there, there might be. But, you know, this is all really good food for thought because we're not in a position here of having to do anything. We can if we want. I mean, I would recommend a gas tax too. What, we're a home rule community and we don't have a gas tax and we have a plethora, a plethora of gas stations. A penny per gallon gas tax, which most communities do, would be fantastic, but we don't have to do that either. We are in a good financial position, we are paying off our debt, we are chipping away at police pensions and we have enough to do most of the things that we want to do, although we also understand that long-term infrastructure will remain a, a critical need and we also need to think about how we're going to pay for that as well. So, but service lines, water main, water main maintenance, all that good stuff. It's, it's a delicate balance between, you know, being prudent with the tax dollars and, and trying to achieve the vision of, of what we're trying to achieve. So, this, this discussion tonight, good, food for thought. I think there's some good feedback that we can move forward with as we start developing the budget in the fall. But if we want to have the goal of making sure that the parking garage itself is completely funded by non-tax dollars, you know, it probably does make the most sense to increase the BDD tax for that specific purpose, but that doesn't mean we can't also, a year from now, do any of the other options listed on that list.
Can, is there a way to estimate what we would think the revenue would be for a one percent liquor tax? Do we, have we done that?
A one percent village-wide on the on-premise.
Liquor consumption and, and packaged liquor, please.
Uh, we could, we could come back with that data.
Yeah, we know what the revenue is on our point seven five BDD, so that's just a matter of a simple calculation.
Yeah, the math is pretty easy.
It might be a little bit more difficult.
It might be a little bit more difficult, but I think we could give you a range, yeah. A guesstimate.
Just make up a number. One observation is that it does seem like if you compare only Kane County ones, not the Cook ones, which is the top half of the chart, that we are somewhat towards the high end of all the Kane, so I wouldn't want to go too much. I think just me personally, more like point two five percent to one percent is, I think, my comfort zone on that just because we're already at the top and I don't want to become the town that has higher than most in Kane County.
Yeah, because you want to know something that will chase out businesses.
Yeah, and I have talked to businesses that do not want like the food, beverage, liquor taxes increased, that is going to hurt the restaurants and it is a balance though because this is for, could serve the parking garage, so still willing to consider adding something. But I also like that idea of the one penny gas tax. But yeah, I'd like to see like numbers on these of like a little nudge in this one or that one could get us to this amount, like what was already said.
Yeah, if it was like one percent, what would it generate if it was one percent on the food, beverage, one percent on the packaged liquor? And then what it would be if we increased point two five? Not to say that we'd be doing all that, but it'd give us a bigger picture where, where the biggest benefit would be.
Not to get off the subject of that, but of the one penny gas tax that you mentioned, Erica, is that part for motor fuel?
Yes.
I mean, we have nothing and we just get a share of whatever, you know, the county gets their piece, state gets their big, municipal gets their piece.
There's, there's some home rule communities that have gas taxes, it's twenty percent or twenty cents per gallon.
Each Chicago.
And with, with all the truck, with all the truck stops, kind of gas stations and the truck parking and assuming they would be paying for gas out here as opposed to Cook County.
Right.
For one penny, it seems like a doable thing, so we can talk about the future.
Yeah, and we do have a lot of tax on our system with that many semi trucks pulling in and out, so that might help with whatever costs are associated with that.
Okay, so I am noticing on our, I mean, this is not a hundred percent related to, well, it is. I'm noticing on our debt, future payment amounts, that next year we're going to lose. Now, lose, we're going to be reducing about a million dollars, our payments on our debts.
Right.
So, that's a conversation that we should have about what we're going to do, I guess. We have the potential now of savings can be being focused. We're always four hundred a year short on the police pension, so that we should look to.
Well, we can't forget the fancy lead service lines that we're going to get to deal with.
So, fancy.
It won't be hard to spend it, that's one. We should talk about.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have some discussion, we have some direction rather. We obviously don't have to come to any decisions today, but if we can just kind of noodle around some numbers and get, come back and touch, touch base on it, we can decide how we want to move forward or if at all, so. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, why don't we move on then, item C, if we could have a motion.
I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing the extension of the snow event parking restriction pilot program through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season.
Second. Do we have a second?
Right.
Okay.
Um.
Questions?
I am, I am confused actually on some of the things in here, so Erica, Phil, I, save me. Okay, so we implemented this program, we measured some roads and we had kind of a minimum requirement for the streets. And I know the point of this was just to make access for emergency vehicles actually reasonable. But I'm seeing in here that there is, that we have, we already had in code that there was no street parking if there was more than two inches of snow. Is that during a snowfall or is that period if there's more than two inches of snow on the grass, you cannot park on the streets?
That was after a two-inch snow event.
Snow event, okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify because the way it was written, I was like, well then, why did we do this? Because that was the whole point is.
Hurry that, yes.
Okay, so I guess.
It was three and we reduced it to two.
Right. I guess I have some thoughts because what I've heard from most people is they have no problem with the program, but they hate the signs, which is still, like, it's fine and, you know, the signs aren't there to be pretty, they're there to tell you things. But I do want to make sure that what we're doing is really correct for the safety and that's what we're focusing on, right? So, I don't, like, I don't necessarily have, it doesn't have to be December to March, right? But could it be, I, it, to me, it's like if there's snow on the ground, and I don't mean on the street. I mean, if there's snow on the ground because what snow on the, on the side or on the grass does is it causes people to park into the road another two feet. And so, you don't just lose, like, on a standard narrow street, you lose another three to four feet because people won't park so that the passenger opens their door into the snowbank. So, that's the biggest thing with making sure with snow on the ground and snow across the curbs and snowbanks on the road, even if the streets are clear and free of ice, free of snow, totally plowed, that we can still accommodate an emergency vehicle with parking on the street. So, I don't know how to get from what we tried to that as a balance or if we just do the pilot again. I don't know. Nobody likes the signs, but nobody seems to have a problem with the, with the theory.
Yeah, I think we understand the effort, but, well, the whole, which you just alluded to it. But I've, I've had a number of people question it. Yeah, the signs are the one thing because in my neighborhood, Red and Howard and Went and, and all the others. The questions are, they are the number of signs and how close they are together, but there's a redundancy between what we have before in our normal snow policy and what this was meant to provide. And so, the overlap, I have not been able to really clear up for a lot of people.
But it doesn't sound like there is because what we had before is the event and what we're talking about is street parking and, and.
But that's really not what the signs convey.
Right, 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 agreed, agreed. The signs are pretty much no parking, because there, we expect there to be snow and then last year there was no snow.
Well, even if there were, I mean, it would, this, these, our, our normal snow policy, I mean, we end up with two inches in April, that policy still holds. So, it's anytime there's two or more inches on the street, don't park on the street. That, we know that most municipalities have. This added period between December first and the end of March, I, I don't think added anything to what we already had in place. And I, if, if it does, I'm, I'm missing it.
Okay, so what I was supposed to add was that we were eliminating parking to one-sided street, that was the new project. And the reason for that was we thought that it was going to help emergency vehicles.
And for plowing, and for plowing.
Have you heard anything from?
Well, and plowing too, yes.
So, have you heard anything from our emergency services saying, boy, that was real helpful, or what did you guys think about plowing?
We had like a minute of snow this year too.
That's it. I, I went through, the past winter, we had four events where there was one inch or more of snow and we had three events where there was two or more inches of snow. Now, some of the one-inch events, the roads, the road temperatures were already warm enough, so it melted the snow, so it didn't require a plowing event. So, our plows hitting the pavement were very minimal this year, like extraordinarily few. So, I don't believe we have enough of a sample to really evaluate, effectively evaluate this program based on this, in the context of plow.
Not so much for the fire trucks and for the.
Mark, did you have any?
Be valued. Come on up.
I'll agree, Mr. Carter. There was enough events to really notice it this year, but apparatus are growing in size here by year unfortunately. So, I mean, more room house, obviously, especially, it's not just the vehicle you have to think about, it's that you got to get out of the vehicle, so you got to extend the doors and it's the hose and it's getting through parked cars to get to somebody's house, the structures now to get through an ambulance. But I agree with Mr. Carter, we'd have enough events this year to really make a determination of it. To get one, one significant snowfall. The only thing we caught a run down there, we had the snow anyways, so we couldn't honestly answer where, how.
Well, I'll leave it off.
We received one complaint earlier. It was one, in fact, we already had a little over, I would say, three or four inches, and it was a cul-de-sac that didn't get plowed as well because it was covered from the cul-de-sac. We addressed it.
But I, I guess what I'm wondering, and this is where I struggle, is what does this sign program that we're talking about extending do for us that the current, no parking on the street at all if there's two inches or more of snow and not just necessarily on the street? I've always assumed that if there was any two inches of snow anywhere, you can't park on the street. I, I'm not seeing where the added benefit or value is.
The one side of the street parking was not tied to snow at all. It was one side, no parking, period.
It wasn't, it wasn't tied to a snow event. That's the key. So, the, what we have on the books, and this is what Phil just explained to us, because I was confused. What we have on the books is specifically for an event where it is actively snowing. What we were trying to accomplish with the signs is that after it snows, the snow sticks around, right? And when the snow sticks around and starts compiling on the side of the road, then people start parking away from the side of the road and encroaching in the middle of the street and therefore, we were trying to limit to one side of the road on the narrow roads so that you could actually pass a single car or a single emergency vehicle down a narrowed, an even more narrowed street. So, that's what, it can be a beautiful sunny day in January, but there's snow on the side, so that's what, that's what the sign thing was doing.
And, and I get that and it makes sense, I guess, but what I'm saying is that it's a very difficult message to put on a small little eight by ten sign to get that message across and when I'm being asked how to explain it or to explain it, I don't know where to go. And so, I just view it as, I always thought the snow issues when we, during the winter months was if there's two inches of snow on the ground, not on the street, but anywhere, you can't park on the street. That's how I always interpreted it. A lot of towns do that.
I'm fine with that interpretation.
Yeah.
I'm fine with not the interpretation.
If there's two inches of snow anywhere, you can't park on the street. Doesn't matter timing, it doesn't matter if it's December or if it's in June, if there's two inches of snow anywhere, you can't park on the street.
Although if we have two inches of snow in June, I'm going to have bigger problems.
Right. And regardless of the clearance of the streets and the passability and so forth, that had nothing to do with it. If we see two inches of snow anywhere, street parking is prohibited from.
I will say that is going to have major implications for some of our businesses. I mean, I'm fine with it from, from a residence perspective. I am totally fine going with if there's two inches of snow on the ground, you can't park on the street and it's not a snow event, it's literally if there's two inches of snow on the ground, you can't park on the street. But we were, what we were, part of what we were attempting to accommodate with this is the fact that we have some businesses in our town that rely on street parking.
Yes.
And so, if we do that, that's going to hurt them.
In residential areas.
In residential areas.
Residential streets.
So.
But that's also the reason for the need for this rule is.
Right, it's like, it's a double-edged sword.
Safety.
Right, we need, we need something and that's what we were attempting to do just one side of the street.
Just say one side, not whole.
But, you know, this is, I don't know, that's my balance. From a residence perspective, I'm totally fine with changing it to two inches.
So, is this really more of an issue down in the flats area?
It's in the flats.
It's not up in the terrace and I think that's where we are getting.
But we do want to make sure that, again.
As long as they don't park when there's two inches.
Right, and this, this again goes back to, I want, I, you know, even though you don't have restaurants in the terrace, we want to make sure people can get a fire truck down the middle of the road, so that's kind of the part of like, we did, we did, I, you know, I, I remember Phil went through and kind of estimated, I think, what, twenty-five feet, twenty feet, thirty feet?
We took measurements. We had a, a road width measurement.
Yeah.
Spunchy.
Right, and we kind of, that, that was the decision. It was if you're less than this, you get a sign on one side, but.
Are there set standards for widths where you shouldn't be allowed to park on both sides if it's beneath a certain width?
It's all based on our parking code.
Is there kind of a state?
I don't think there's any guide per se.
There's no guide? I know there's, there are guides for new, there's, I, I think there are guides for like new developments, like new, new, new roads have to be a certain width in order to have parking, but.
I'd like our, like our fire team's perspective on which streets are actual issues and just make those one side only if it's, only if it's really necessary. And that might remove the whole snow confusion. And that might remove the whole snow confusion, because it's just as much on a summer day, if you have two duly's on both sides of the street, you can't get a vehicle through.
Yeah, I don't know.
We can review the streets that are affected by this with the fire department and make sure that there's in alignment with what's currently on there. And then we can make a recommendation and maybe.
I'd also like to see the ordinance, because it's not in here.
Yeah.
There's an ordinance to extend the old ordinance, but the actual ordinance of extending is not in here. And then I'd clarify some of these questions we're having, or we'll actually extend.
If you just visualize this, in a snow event, right, you can't park anywhere in the city, because we need to plow the streets. But the next day, the streets are clear. However, there's still a mountain of snow on both sides of the curb. So like she said, if you park your car two feet in on both sides, street's clear, but you still need to open that passenger door. And people, instead of letting the passenger out and then pulling up next to the curb, they just park three feet in. You still have, you know, three feet of snow on both sides, but you can't, you still can't get the emergency vehicle down the center anymore. So that's why.
Does our two-inch, a snow policy rule, it is limited only to what's on the street? I mean.
Yeah, so it's specific to, within twelve hours after the snow stops falling, parking is prohibited. And then once we've had a chance to clear the streets, parking can resume. So it's within a twelve-hour period after the snow stops falling, in a two-inch snow event.
We have a question in back.
Can I ask a question to the police? Because I did notice a hundred cars parked on our street where they were not supposed to be parking between December and March. And I didn't see a ticket, and those cars were there for hours. Was the police actively ticketing those cars?
We did not. There was no ticketing supposed to be done for the pilot program. There was no enforcement during the pilot, it was a test. It was, it was a test here.
Oh, okay, so residents could be parking there and have a.
Well, that's why we're kind of discussing this. Yeah.
So I think we'd have a lot more residents if they got tickets complaining about it.
Right.
Are you talking during the day when you flew out of the church and parked?
Yeah, during the day, yeah, during the day. Because, you know, I, I'm a resident, I see the sign that says don't park. And so I'm assuming that if I parked there, I may get a ticket.
We had the opportunity or the option to issue advisory citations without a dollar, monetary penalty.
Right.
So we, there was that opportunity.
Yeah.
And so I, to me, it's not an effective pilot program unless you know what's happening with the residents and how they feel about it.
So, I mean, I feel like we have a lot of options, or a lot of thoughts.
I have one other comment.
You go first then.
Yeah. Mark Sims had spoken to a bunch of different trustees. And I invited him to come in today because it was specific, his concern was specific to this. And so one of his, and he lives up in the terrace. And one of his concerns was that the, just the number of the signs. And the fact that an additional pole was put in, and if the sign could be put on or below a stop sign or another existing sign added, I know we've got some of those up.
Stop signs typically we don't, but other signs, we did reuse some poles. But we wanted to make sure that on a length of a block, we wanted to make sure that there was no confusion. And the distinction between these signs and then the, let's call it the two-inch signs, they were three inches when we put them up years ago, but two-inch restriction. Those were installed really at the perimeter of the community and the perimeter of different subdivisions. These now are internal to the various subdivisions. So none of the residents will see the two-inch signs within the, within the, their neighborhoods. It's at the perimeter.
Except for when they come and go from their homes.
Yes, so for example, on Howard, we have one right at Seventy-sixth. When you turn off the Seventy-two on Howard, you'll see it, but you won't see it once you're in the neighborhood.
Right. So I think, you know, just reassessing the number of signs, where we're placing them, if we can reuse and not have so many posts.
We tried to do that, we could take another one.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then, and that also it's something that's only applicable for a few numbers, a few days during the whole three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. So is there a different way to socialize that? Or I think we all agree, and it sounds like we need to take a look at the, what the text is of the specific signs. Because that's going to end up changing depending on what we end up designing. And just basically decluttering the signage that we have throughout the village. Simplifying.
Pulling this guy.
Should we postpone this?
At least we don't have to figure it out for a few months, so we've got some time. We've got enough time at this point. I, so I, two inches of snowfall on the ground, no parking was raised. Taught, working with the fire department on the possibility of some streets needing to be one side all the time was raised. Was there something else besides just doing this again and, you know, continuing this?
I, I always, I, I thought when we had this conversation that we were doing, we were closing down a one-sided street all the time. It wasn't during snow, it was all the time. That's how I remember when we had the discussion about it. And I, this is like, only reason I thought we would have this thing was because of this whole thing with the fire trucks trying to get by. And if the fire truck can't get by, when there's parking on both sides, it doesn't matter if there's snow there or not, in my opinion.
We, I think we, we did this just for, I think we started off with snow, because it's the worst. It's, it's the worst of it. You really can't get by. Now, I don't know, maybe, maybe our local fire department has more opinions about doing this all the time, and maybe that's the solution. Because if they can't, if it's too hard and some of the roads are too narrow for them in May. Then it should be all year round, you know? If, if they can't get, if a fire truck can't get down the middle of the street when there's no snow. Then we need to, we need to resolve that. And some roads are smaller than others, you know? Some roads are little bitty. And we have a lot, some of the streets in the flats already only have parking on one side.
My street only has parking on one side.
Just not all of them. You know, there's already no parking on one side of the street signs in the flats for quite a few of the streets, so.
We also have garbage trucks too, and we need to have, the towders are placed on the street.
Right.
You know, certainly the, the garbage trucks have some challenges on the narrower streets, getting to where they need to, to be.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second for this, and we want to.
I would want to postpone this to the July fifteenth.
I love it. Second. Second.
Driver?
Yep.
Coonsy?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Britton?
Yes.
Soder?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Okay, then that'll take us to reports, and if you can call it that proclamation. I'm going to, as part of my report, start out by reading a public service recognition proclamation. Okay. For the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at a federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation's working, our nation working. Their tireless efforts are especially critical today during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Did I miss something in the?
Whoopsies. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but olds. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, local border patrol, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants, public servants include public works laborers, engineers, plan reviewers, administrative assistants, record specialists, teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, and astronauts. Nurses and safety inspectors, computer technicians and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in, day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of the government, of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in the democracy that regulate, that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Jeff Lyman, Village President of East Dundee, do hereby announce and proclaim all citizens, to all citizens, and set seal heretofore that May fifth through May eleventh is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Thank you. Okay, and as an aside to that, I have received two emails. One to pat the back of Mr. Ranieri, who's not here. There was an individual who wanted to point out the service that he provided and was very pleased with it. So they took the time to send an email and CC'd me on that, and so I responded to them and was grateful to receive that. In addition, I received an email from an individual who, I don't know what town they are on, but they're a Dundee township. And a Harper College student currently, that wanted to recognize the work we've done in the downtown. And understanding that the job that we do is usually thankless. And so wanted to just send out a note of thanks and pointing out really how, how nicely the downtown is coming along. And I was really appreciative of that too, so I responded to that as well. So thank you all for that. And that is then all I have, so why don't we start with Andy?
I'll just add to that, thank you to the staff and all the reports and data that you put together and all the work that was done. It's very helpful. I know you get attacked when there's debates, it's easy to blame the data and the messenger, but I appreciate all the work that goes into things. That's all.
Ditto and no report.
Rich?
I saw the trees coming out of the river.
Yeah, it's a big one, it's coming out.
So my kids will be very disappointed, but happy to see that it's going to remove some of the, the fun bystander activity over there, so.
Double quotes, every morning.
We'll watch, we'll be watching.
Oh, yeah, we'll all be watching. We'll all be down there staring at everybody.
Being done in conjunction with the fire department, correct?
There will be boats.
We don't have that put in on the city, but we appreciate the help.
Yes.
That's all.
Scott?
Yeah, no, I would echo the appreciation for public works, all the other public servants, deep state. But I have no report.
Yes, thanks to everyone that makes this village run. I really, really appreciate it. And I've been extremely appreciative and impressed and supported. And I want to call out Franco and Caleb in their support of the community, the committee meetings that we were having around the food trucks. There was a lot of big asks, a lot of data that was pulled together. In addition, our, our law firm brought in a, yeah, Marcus, who was, who is a food truck aficionado, ordinance aficionado.
Well, he is now, if he wasn't.
And a pretty fun guy to work with through this, because it was not fun. But it was definitely a really great and knowledgeable group of people, all working towards a common goal. And I really, really appreciate that. The other thing, the other report I have is actually circling back to last November when there was the shooting across at the Shell Station.
The BP?
At, BP, at the BP on, on, what is that, Dundee and, and twenty-five? Mary Kay Harvey and a group of the neighbors that live in the, there's a little frontage road had contacted, I think she contacted all of us, but I went back with her with some, to her with some ideas with regards to the frontage road landscaping and if there's any trees or any other landscaping that we can do along that area just to shield it. It's, she is under the understanding that it's IDOT that, that controls that. But I know we've had some pretty nice inner governmental agreements and cooperation with them with plowing and improving, improving that general area. She has also given to me the same letter from, from three, three or four of her neighbors that are along that street with what they would, that they would like to see, some kind of improvements along that area. Also, did you have a chance to take a look at the condition of the road and how it compared, the frontage roads? How it compared to our other streets? Or if, if not, can we add it for the next, if you do it in the fall?
Entire, as you indicated, it is on, I believe on state level.
We will take a look at the condition and back to you. Yeah. And then I'll just, I'll just hand this off, these letters off to you so you can. It's with Mary Kay Harvey, Diane, and Richard Robertson, who are big supporters of, of the Village and the Depot. And Dorothy Marsh at six forty-two and six forty-four Harrington Avenue.
Our crews will be taking down some of the dead trees in there soon. It's under, it's under risk to do a rest.
Okay, great. So if you guys can get together and then try and get back to Mary Kay with what can and can't be done and what the timeframe would be. Just trying to spruce up the area and making it look a little bit more residential than it's kind of fallen into the last couple of years. And that's all I have.
Sarah?
I always come last, but thank you staff. Thank you everybody for all the work. And thank you Phil for the, and Mark for the river tree that I've been staring at for a little while now. I much appreciate seeing that gone on Saturday. Phil, it is duckling season in the flats. I think last year we talked about getting some storm grates, something to cover to prevent the little babies from falling in. Because they do every year, so tis the season for that to happen. Which we do have a little save the duck. Every time we see a mama duck outside of a grate, we have to go try to figure out how to rescue the babies, so if we could avoid them.
We had that outside Colby's last year.
Baby ducks.
It's the fire department's favorite PR.
Right, exactly, no, right. He's like, no, don't fix the grates. Don't fix the grates, no. If, if there's something to be done, that, I think we tossed it around a little bit last year. If there's something we could do while it's duckling season. And then Jeff, we have a depot council that we need to get rolling. So if we could have some appointments in the next little bit, that would be great.
Do you need, you've had the names and phone numbers given to?
Catherine, Catherine.
Okay, perfect.
Got all those names.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, that's starting now. Like the, the depot market is starting next weekend, so we gotta get that council up and running.
No problem.
All right, that's it for me.
Kelly?
Uh, no report, other than thank you all for all the work that you do.
Joe? And Phil?
Depot bathrooms should be open by the end of the week.
Fancy, exciting. Terry?
There's a less but not least.
Are they?
I'd really like to do a ribbon cutting on the bathroom. Very proud of that project.
It's a great idea.
Very excited about that project coming to completion, because lots of ADA improvements, both to the accessibility of the main restroom and then adding the additional companion care restroom on the inside. So we have now a new amenity that wasn't there before that we want to make sure we publicize to the community so that people are aware of it when they come to events. so that people are aware of it when they come to events, et cetera. And as part of Public Service Week, Brandis and I have been planning some activities for the staff. So this morning, we hosted breakfast in the kitchen for all of our staff. And then we also invited the fire district. So we had a great crowd this morning.
Nice.
At least 40 people. So that was very nice. Always good when we can include our fire partners. And then on Wednesday, we're doing a staff lunch with Bingo. And we also got some trinkets we're going to give out. And then if you read my weekly report, we're going to send notes of appreciation on Friday. So if you want to send them to me, I'll send them out. Otherwise, if you want to send them out yourself, I include a dead email address and you can send them out if you choose. But very excited to celebrate Public Service Week this year in a sort of different way than we have in the past.
Can I add one more thing to that to highlight? In going through the warrants, I saw lots of little things for the depot renovation. And I know you guys took it from having a general contractor handle it to bringing it in-house. And that put a more burden on the whole team. And I would, I would love to know what kind of savings we realized. And also thank you guys for being creative in the solution and figuring that out and making a hard call. That may cause you more work, but in the end, we got it done.
Yes. Phil and Chris have been very diligent in overseeing that project. And also I believe public work staff did some initial work on the demolition. So, yeah, that saved the residents a lot of money and added a little extra work to their plate. But they also know how, how near and dear to my heart that project is and how public-facing it is. So I think they've really given it a lot of care and making sure that we get it right so that people can enjoy it for years to come.
Awesome.
Since, well, since it's a public building too, I'd just like to add, we might want to talk about the need for a second exit. Since we've eliminated the one through on the south end, there's only one now. And so I don't know if there's any sort of, if there's any issues with that, that we might have to have a blow door or anything like that. It's extra work and I don't know if we want to.
Seems like a good project for next year.
Okay, is that it?
That's all.
Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting. I appreciate, we are back, I don't believe going into executive session. Is that correct? Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jose, hey, thank you all for coming. We'll see you in two weeks.
Two weeks.